Good evening. Welcome to the Village of Westmont. Committee of the Hall meeting for February 16th, 2012. Let us begin by having our clerk take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerks here, trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Acting Fire Chief Weis. Public Works Director May. Acting Finance Director Parker.
Thank you. Please join us in the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item, for the minutes of the February 2nd Committee of the Hall meeting and the February 6th Village Board meeting. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, moving right on. Right along. I'm not aware of any open forum requests before us this evening. Reports the mayor, though. One thing I have to report at this time is the fact that I beat trustee Seneca in usually making this announcement, and that is that this week we got another announcement from the, a flyer from the Westmont Library concerning wonderful programs that they offer. They do such a great job, and we're so proud of all of their activities. And many people who left the library, when they weren't happy with the service, the personnel have come back, and the library is just growing, growing, and growing. I couldn't be more encouraged, and I'm sure everybody here feels the same way. Thank you. Next, our village clerk.
I just want to remind everyone that Village Hall will be closed Monday, February 20th, for President's Day, and our meeting will be Tuesday at 7:00, February 21st. I want to be sure everybody remembers that. And there's a couple of birthdays this week. There's former trustee Martins and trustee Klebenow, so happy birthday to both of them. And other than that, I don't have any.
Okay. Next, our village attorney, John Zemanek.
Thanks. I have nothing tonight.
Village manager Ron Searle.
Thank you. Just want to mention that on Tuesday, we will be giving a report on our Climate Action Plan that was put in place a couple of years ago. And so that'll be on the agenda for Tuesday, the 21st.
Any further?
Yes, a couple of other things. Passed out a supplemental purchase order list for a purchase order to Bell Fuels for $100,000. This is an encumbrance PO. If you recall during the budget discussion last year, we had concerns about the possible dramatic increase in gasoline. This was budgeted, but we segregated it so that, in a sense, you've seen how far in the year we've gotten before we've had to tap into that additional monies for the fuel for the remainder of this fiscal year. So I'd like to add that to the agenda on Tuesday. Also wanted to mention that there's a Public Information Committee meeting. It's at 6:00 on Tuesday. And then I would like to request executive session of personnel. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee items. Start with trustee Nero.
The only thing is, happy birthday to trustee Klebenow.
That's all I have, sir.
Trustee Scott.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to send my condolences, I'm sure with everybody else in the board, to Nancy Westman for the passing of Roger last Friday. I'm sure there's hardly anybody in town who doesn't know Roger and what he's done. Citizen of the Year, former village trustee, former president of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce, two-time president of the Oakwood Homeowners Association, and various committees, the Census Committee, the Economic Development Committee, and probably another dozen that I can't remember or don't know about. He was a member of the Hensdale Chamber of Commerce, married to his wife Nancy for 45 years, and an avid supporter of this community. This man never had a bad word to say about this town and always promoted it in a positive way. And he will be very much missed by this whole town, so our thoughts and prayers should go out with Nancy in getting through this. And then the only other thing I have is that the Progressive Village Performance Network is going to have auditions this Sunday, February 19th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., and Monday, February 20th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Westmont Community Center. And they're looking for kids, men and women, ages 14 to 19, but they said that they would take kids older or younger if they could fit the bill. And this is for their upcoming musical, which is "Back to the 80s." And you can call the Park District's number at (630) 963-5252 for more information. And that's all I've got, sir.
If I could just take up on that just a little bit. Not only all of our admiration for Roger for all his years of service to the village and the community, but also to Nancy. They never peered at a function when they weren't together. She supported him 1,000% in everything that he did, and continued that right up until the last days of his life.
If it wasn't for her, he wouldn't be involved as much as he...
Absolutely, absolutely not.
The woman behind the man.
Well, I told him many times he had married outside his class.
He doesn't mean that, Roger.
My congratulations and thanks for all she did for Roger, for all 45 of those years. She is most, most deserving.
Well said.
Thank you. Trustee Klebenow.
Just my sympathies to the Westman family. I've known Roger for so long. He helped my daughter find a home, sold her her home, and, you know, just got to be a little close to the family like that, and he's going to be sorely missed. Sympathy to Nancy and the rest of the family. That's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Fleming.
My condolences as well, and happy birthday to Pat. That's all I have.
Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Since you stole my thunder on the library, I'll just say other things. It is a wonderful, wonderful flyer they send out, and it's a great library, but just wanted to send best wishes out to Lillian Archibald. She's been in the hospital. She had a heart procedure. She is absolutely fine. She's home. She's in her kitchen baking in front of that oven, so just wanted to wish her well and glad that she's doing okay. Also wanted to mention that with Lent coming very, very quickly, as early as next week, the Knights of Columbus will once again have their Friday Fish Fries, and that'll be starting on February 24th. They have a couple of different kinds of fish that are all you can eat, and then they have shrimp and crab cakes. And for kids or people that don't like fish, they've got cheese pizza and fish sticks and chicken nuggets, you name it. So it's a great family outing, so I encourage everyone to take advantage of the fish fry. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Emery.
Thank you. My condolences also to the Westman family. I know a lot of people in Westmont have known them very well for a long, long time. And they lived up on the north side of, Nancy still does, lives on the north side of town, and I live on the far south side of town. And after I was elected, Nancy and Roger sent me, it wasn't even really a note, it was a letter, saying how much they were pleased that I had been elected and what they hoped I would be able to accomplish. And that was my introduction to them, other than just, you know, a cursory introduction at functions. And it really meant a lot to me. So I wish, I wish her godspeed for things to pass to the point where she has happy memories only. I would like, I'd also like to tell everybody that I'm glad to see trustee Seneca is functioning to some degree. It may look like she has a lot of function, but I know...
She's not talking about my mind, you guys.
Her shoulder, it's doing well, but not enough for, like, things like housework and all that, so...
Are you listening, Bob?
Yeah, that's the point.
Well said.
And happy birthday, Pat. And also, since we have an executive session, I'd also like to add pending litigation on it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Executive session met. Board to consider motion to accept, approve, and release the following executive session meetings. They are all listed, so... Any questions, comments?
Believe me, Pat and I have gone over these with... I do know. So can we also add into the case that 18 months old...
You know, it doesn't need to be part of the motion because the act authorizes the village to do so once the minutes are released. They just do that automatically.
No, I mean, you can do it if you're 18 months old, you can get them. You don't have to release them. They don't have to be released from that minutes.
Okay, I'll double-check that point.
Yep. You can't... Trust me. I wouldn't give you...
In either event, it doesn't have to be part of the motion.
Okay, all right.
Moving along. New business. Westmont, 2012 Westmont Red White and Barbecue Festival. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from the Westmont Lions Club in regard to the red, white, and barbecue event. Number one, request to close Plaza Drive from Burr Oak to Blackhawk Drive Wednesday, May 23rd, and reopen on Monday, May 28th. Egress for local business, traffic for businesses on Plaza between Burr Oak and Blackhawk will be permitted from the intersection of Plaza and Burr Oak. Next, request approve liquor license fee waiver for the event. Next, request approve amusement license fee waiver for the event. And finally, request to approve live amplified sound waiver during event hours.
You got it, Larry. Good job. Well, good evening. Once again, the Lions Club is coming before the board to seek approval for the 2012 Red White and Barbecue. This is our sixth year, and hopefully it'll be a whole lot better than it was last year. And I mean that in a good way because you all remember all the...
The weather.
The terrible weather that we had. We actually had to cancel part of the event because of the weather. Things are going very strong, and of course, we're coming before you to seek out approval. What I've sent before you, I think everybody has a copy. Just a little bit of history on the barbecue. As everyone knows, it was started in 2007 by the Lions Club with several instrumental people, Jim Addington, Mark Link from Uncle Bubbs, Scotty Johnson, one of our competitors. It was all really their idea to get this thing going. In 2007, we started out an inaugural year, 25 professional teams, six amateurs, some free music, and a whole bunch of barbecue vendors. As you can see through the timeline here, that's progressed to last year, we had 61 professional teams, 40 amateurs, free music. We've added a crafter show, commercial vendors, a carnival, and we still have the barbecue vendors out there. With everything said, I'm trying to, I just want to be short, that's all. Everything said there, the Red White and Barbecue is the second largest event in the Village of Westmont right now. On top of that, it is the largest Kansas City Barbecue Association championship contest in the state. Normally, we would expect to see, in the neighborhood of about 10,000 people, you know, throughout the whole weekend, which is, it's, you know, to put this whole thing together is really not a small feat. It's a whole year-long process. What we're planning on offering this year is really no different than what we have in the past, just three days of live music for free to anyone who comes out. We're going to have, we've got some new barbecue vendors that are going to be joining us. Again, we're seeking approval for the All Ages Carnival. We're going to have more cooking demonstrations than we've ever had before. The People's Choice Chili, we're hoping that that will continue. We're expecting, like I said, over 10,000 people. We've got several people that are helping us out. We're going to invite this year several of the military bases, Great Lakes included, to come down and join us. We've sent out personal invitations. Who's seen the program Barbecue Pit Masters on TV? I know I have. But there's some of those, you know, world champions there. We've personally invited. We've gotten some here and there that they may or may not attend. We don't have anything solid yet. One of our sponsors, I don't know if you guys remember last year from Kraft Foods, the team from Kraft Foods, unfortunately, the leader of that passed away a couple weeks ago. So we're still negotiating with Kraft to get them out there, and they're unsure at this time what they're going to do, but that's going to be a big thing if we can. And we're going to, if we can get them there, we're going to make this something very, very special for them. We're going to expand the barbecue competition itself, hopefully. Of course, these are all hopefuls. We're going to expand the amateur contest. We've already started getting applications in from both already. We got our first amateur application in December. We're going to add, continue with the commercial vendors, the craft show just like normal, and we've got various raffles that we're going to be placing. And of course, you guys know that the money raised from this event really go back to the Lions Club to help out with blind and deaf activities. So the profits really do go to a very good cause. Now, let's get into the layout. The layout is pretty much the same as it has been. In fact, I think it is the same as it has been in the past. There's not any changes. There's a couple of minor detailed things that nobody's really going to notice. We've expanded, if you look up in here, we've kind of expanded just a little bit further. Let's see, where's that? Where in the past, we've only had up to this point. The Park District has graciously given us virtually the entire parking lot this year, keeping the open parking up here, which is great. This allows us to add more barbecue vendors, more craft vendors, more of everything. It really opens it up quite a bit. But with this, we're trying to remove as many of the professional teams as we can because you'll see up here, it's that we added professional teams on the street. The idea is with, comes from the rain that we had last year. We want to take as many of the professional teams as absolutely possible off of the grass, and we want to put them on concrete. Is that going to be the perfect scenario? We'll find out. But that's our goal, to take as much off the grass as we possibly can. The amateur contest will still be on the grass like it has always been, up on the soccer field. But I think that's about all I have to say because, again, I want to keep it as short as possible. There's really no changes to this year. Do you have anything you wanted to add?
I got a question for you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
The one thing that I've always asked for is, what is going to be available for the residents of Westmont?
We have...
To consume barbecue. Not hamburgers, hot dogs, and bratwurst, but barbecue.
Well, as per your request over the past years, you've noticed that we have expanded the barbecue vendors that come out. We do have some world-class barbecue vendors. In fact, we had last year, one of the guys, off the top of my head, I forget what his name is, but he's putting up his whole, you know, sign and everything up. I'm like, I looked at our chairman or our co-chairman, and I said, I didn't know we were putting a carnival ride up in the parking lot here. He goes, no. He goes, that's his sign. And I was like, wow. But we have him coming back again this year. We have several, like I said, new ones. We're working with different teams. I can't really say who yet because they're not locked in, and I don't want to spoil anything. But as soon as that information's available, I will definitely get that out to you, but...
So they will be just serving barbecue, or...
Just barbecue.
Okay.
And of course, we will still have, you know, the...
The pizza and stuff like that.
Not, I don't know if we're going to have pizza this year, but we're still going to have the hamburgers and the hot dogs, you know, because not everybody is into barbecue.
Right. But to just have that available for them, it's great.
We'll have all the ribs available for you, as you can imagine.
And catch the whiff of the beef. There's going to be a few of us that are going to say, we got to get over there quick.
That's right. And you know the barbecue guys that we have come out, they are the best.
Good. Thank you.
I was just going to add a couple of items real quick. First, thank you to the Lions for, of course, working cooperatively with the village. The village supplies a decent amount of work to help this event come off, including Public Works, police, fire, and of course, our EMA volunteers. Just talking about the street closure real quick because this is always a question that comes up. One, we make sure that we send out a written notice to all of the businesses in the Tewaunsee Park area. The Lions Club will be doing that the week before the event, so everybody's aware of the street closure, so it doesn't affect their businesses. Also, we have IGI and some other businesses on Plaza east of Burr Oak here. So at the moment, the request that's going to be before you is that this is going to be a soft barricade to allow vehicle egress to these businesses during their business hours. It is the Lions Club hope they're in conversations with IGI that maybe if IGI and these businesses here would allow it and ended up not being open on those days, that they might come back before the board and ask for hard closure all the way to expand their carnival and other things on Plaza Drive. But the request that's before you on Monday is soft closure here, hard closure at this point here, and of course, a hard closure there. And I think that's all I have to say. The other item happening this weekend, of course, is the Race the Flag 5K, and that group has been busy planning for quite some time, and they'll probably be before you in the next 30 days with their request as well.
Right. You know, with the 5K, we offer them our equipment, you know, our tents, our sound system and everything, just to help them out. Can I answer any other questions besides who my barbecue vendors are?
Just get a check on that weather.
Thank you.
No, that's it. Pray for good weather this year, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Prostate Cancer Foundation 5K Run/3K Walk. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following for the annual Prostate Cancer Foundation of Chicago's 5K Run/3K Walk.
Hi there, I'm Jennifer Brochuk, and I was here last year requesting approval for our 2011 race, which I would say was a success despite the rain. We had about 229 registered for the event. Not all of them came because of the weather, but after expenses, we did raise $7,500 for our foundation, which goes to prostate cancer awareness, free screenings. We also do research and publications, as we're affiliated with Chicago Prostate Cancer Center. So we're looking to do another 5K run and 3K walk September 9th. Pretty much the same thing as last year. We will, you know, have some street closures. We'll notify our neighbors a week or two before. I don't think we had any complaints last year. It's on a Sunday morning. There's all business. We'll use parking from our immediate neighbors. We had parking attendants to help, you know, make sure that all went smooth. The race started at 8:00 last year, and our last runner was my daughter, who came in in about 40 minutes. So the streets were cleared off pretty quickly after that. Any questions?
Did you plan it on purpose to make sure she came in last, to make sure...
She's very embarrassed because she came in after the walkers even.
I thought she was...
She was 10.
On purpose to make sure everybody made it through.
Yes. Just behind our little person at the end, making sure everybody came in.
Yes. Fairy tales.
We always need those people.
Yes.
People that might be watching this, where it's going to begin, where it's going to end.
Okay, I do have a map here.
Those procedures are.
He'll turn on.
He'll turn.
Oh, good. Okay. So actually, the 5K run is a kind of go around twice. We're going to start right here, which is right outside Chicago Prostate Cancer Center on Pass Penali Drive, and they will head north, go west here on Oakmont, not quite till the end, come back, come back north to 35th Street, and then back to the center, and then that's actually the walk, and then the runners will go one straight up north and back, and that's it.
Okay.
To the extent that's listed here as a special events permit has a fee requirement, I put in the ordinance that the fee would be waived for this not-for-profit, if that's acceptable to everyone?
Yes.
There's no fee for the live entertainment license, but for the other one, there might be.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope. Nope.
Very good. It'll be on our agenda for consideration on...
Thank you.
Or Tuesday, excuse me. Tuesday. Next item, Northern Illinois Police Alarm System membership. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement which authorizes the village become a member of the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, NIPAS, in order to obtain services of their mobile field force.
Good evening, Mayor, Village Board. This is my request. We are, as you've seen in the newspapers and all over TV, coming this May in the city of Chicago is the NATO and GA Conference. It's a one-week event. And as you can see, if you've heard on TV, they're expecting a large amount of protesters. Last we heard, there's a request for 50,000 protesters to come and occupy the city. Police chiefs in the western suburbs are always gearing up and planning, as we do, to be prepared for any contingencies that would happen here in DuPage and in Westmont. And along those lines, by joining NIPAS, the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, it's a multi, I guess the best way to describe it is a task force of over 90 communities, and they have what's called a mobile field force. And these would be riot-trained officers from other communities that would be uniformed and equipped to respond to any large protest that we could anticipate or experience, should it happen here in Westmont in a local community. One of the requirements is, there's a monetary requirement. There's a uniform requirement of, I believe, $1,200, and a membership fee of $1,200, and then next year it drops down to $450. It also requires us to give one officer to the team, so you'll have one Westmont officer to the team, so you'll also have a local component. It just allows us to prepare for any upcoming events. We don't have any intelligence or anything to show that anything is going to happen here in Westmont, but we just want to be prepared and be, in case we do have an incident, be able to address that incident safely, and not only for our officers, but mainly for our public and for people that attend the village. One thing I may note, I know the village manager asked about this, that there was a way to determine what other towns are doing, or how many other towns are joining. I just received a survey today from the DuPage Chiefs Association. 28 towns were surveyed. 15 towns in DuPage County are doing just as I'm doing here tonight, petitioning their boards to ask to join NIPAS. 11 towns are currently undecided, and there's one town that is indicated they are not going to join. So you can tell that the majority of departments in the area are taking the same precautions we are.
Anything else?
I've got a couple of questions for you. First of all, I'm interested to see who in DuPage, I know they're petitioning their boards for it, because NIPAS was always more further north, where to respond, any of the three divisions of NIPAS, to respond to something down here might take a while. And how does this, how does this either supplement, replace, or whatever, what are your intentions as far as like, Dumeg or calling in ISP or something? Because, you know, they have the three units, one SWAT and one hostage negotiation, I forget what the third one is. But I know they do a lot of training also. Can we afford, with the close eye that we keep on the number of sworn officers in the department, can we afford to give up one of our officers? What is entailed, and how, how much time does he have to spend training and going through a lot of stuff with NIPAS? Because I know they do tons of training.
There is training coming up in March. I believe it's a three-day training. I believe it's a three-day training program. There's another re-trainer in April that they're recommending that the officer would attend in participate, or anticipation for the G8. I'm looking for the calendar, I'll just pass it up here. They have a calendar of their training dates that the officer or the team member would be required to attend. I'm looking at one in June, I'm looking for the NIPAS, or the mobile field forces. There's approximately, I believe, there were seven training days that they would have to attend, where the officer would leave his patrol. If there was not enough manpower, we'd have to backfill for his position to go and attend the training for their requirements. The training is mandatory, because it is a team concept, he needs to be able to train, you know, to train with the team and be there. I can get you by Tuesday the exact number of dates.
Yeah, because the other thing is that on callouts, on callouts, if we have to send an officer to what are the typical members of NIPAS, unless he's going lights and siren, it could take him an hour to get even to where they're mustering.
Chief, could we also find out how often do they actually activate the unit historically?
I can get that information on Monday. There's a figure, but I don't want to.
And also the list of the communities that are all members, as well as considering.
In our briefing, there was a figure, but I don't want, I'm not 100% sure that's the right one, so I don't want to give misinformation.
You can do it for Tuesday.
Yes. Especially, I can get you the list, I can give it to you right now, that shows a list of towns that are, from the survey that we have, that are going into NIPAS.
Are they considering it, or have they already voted to go in?
They were asked in the survey that they're gonna, current members gonna join, or they are, will join, they're getting, you know, asked to recommend, are they going to join? Those are the fifteen towns that said they are gonna join. I know Hinsdale, I believe Downers Grove, I know there was one other chief I spoke to yesterday that they, West Chicago, they are joining. It's just that there's, for DuPage contingent. The question was, are you going to join, or will you join? Fifteen departments replied affirmative, yes, they were. Eleven replied that they were undecided, or there was one that did not reply at all. And there was one in DuPage that said they're not.
What's the, so what's the intention about what it'll do to either supplement or replace what you would currently use if you need SWAT?
We would not be joining, we would not be using the SWAT component. There's an extra fee for that. We are only joining, and we're only gonna be a member for the Mobile Field Force, we're not gonna choose them for the SWAT component. We have Fiat, the felony investigation assistant team, SWAT team, that team is what we're committed for, for our SWAT. We have two members for that, it's a closer net, there's more training with that. We would not, we would only be going to NIPAS for the Mobile Field Force and for their dignitary protection. If we had a dignitary that would come to town, they would offer enough manpower for traffic control, that type of thing. We were not gonna use them for SWAT, or for special weapons.
All right, I'm gonna play devil's advocate. Dignitary protection, I'm not impressed with, but what would be the situations or anticipated use of the Mobile Field Force?
If we had a organization that was going to ask for a large demonstration, let us know ahead of time that they're gonna be coming to Westmont, that there's going to be an event, they're gonna hold a rally at Burlington and Cass, or in front of the Village Hall on such and such a date. If the intelligence showed that it was gonna be larger than, you know, what we could handle, we would ask for the NIPAS assistance. If it, you know, we know the event is coming, if the event is here, we would handle it, and then also handle it with mutual aid, and then also see if NIPAS could respond if the event was gonna be a longer event. The way, my understanding was for the Mobile Field Force, it's mainly for pre-planned events, it's not for if we had a major crime, say a homicide or something like that, that we would use mutual aid for, we would not be using NIPAS for. NIPAS usually is more for pre-planned or events that we know that are gonna occur.
As far as trustee discussion, I support you on 99.9% of things, Tom. This is the .01. I'm against it.
This is why we come to the board, I just come for the request and...
I didn't understand how, what is the fee to join the membership?
The equipment fee.
You said that was $1,200.
Yes, I think it's, I think we budgeted $1,300 for the equipment. It was $1,200, it might have been $250, I don't have the exact fee in front of me.
But is that the annual membership fee?
The annual membership fee for the Mobile Field Forces, I believe, is $450, but there's initial for the one-year, one-time cost, which puts the membership fee to $1,200 as well. I think that may be as well as $1,250 as well.
So our first-year join-in would be $1,200, and then after that, it's $1,450?
For the first year, we're anticipating, say, closer to $3,000, to $1,450.
With the uniform and?
$2,500, and then we, I think we, we found money, we're gonna address money in the budget for close to $3,000, just to give us a possible question, just in case. The annual or the membership fee would be $1,205. For the equipment, they're estimating $1,250, so we're anticipating, or estimating $2,455 for the, for this year. Next year, we would not have to pay for the equipment, we're only giving one officer, not two. And for next year, we would, you know, keep the equipment, we would not have to pay the equipment fee next year.
And there's, and there's several times during the year they have to go for training?
Yes.
That he would have to go, he or she?
Chief, you may not know this now, but how many instances in the past has there been an event where some organization has called the Village beforehand and said, hey, we're gonna be here in Cass and Burlington to protest this cause? How many times has that happened? I know times are changing and things are different now than maybe ten years ago, but do you anticipate that happening in the future?
We don't know. This is more of an insurance policy, anticipating in case something does happen. We don't know what's gonna happen with this event, we don't know what's gonna happen in the city, we don't know if there's, you know, where all the events are gonna take place, whether they'll all stay main, staying down in Chicago, or if they'll move out to the suburbs.
Weren't we notified when they were gonna pick it, where the old abortion area was? Because we were laughing, it's not there anymore, but they were still gonna come there?
No, the abortion, the abortion clinic that used to be on Cass Avenue was just a regular basis, and they would not give us warning.
Okay.
We, or sometimes we would on certain, there were certain events, anniversary dates, that we know to, we planned, because we knew that they would usually came and protested en masse. That would probably be the last protest, and that was gonna handle locally.
So what would happen if, let's say, tomorrow, you get a phone call, hey, we're coming with 10,000 people to protest, and we're not members of this organization? What would we do as Westmont? Would we just?
We would try to reach out to the sheriff's office and see if they're able to respond. We would also try to see if other towns would come and assist us, and then we would...
So optional, they don't have to come and help us?
We could request mutual aid, and if they have officers available, they respond to as much as we can, and we can expand out. That's, like I said, that were to happen tomorrow, the problem with the G8 that we don't know is, is that we may request mutual aid, and there's something going on in their town, and the sheriff is not gonna respond, we would be on our own.
Chief, how will the officer be selected?
We have, we've opened it up right now for our officers, the criteria is out there, pending board approval.
So volunteer?
Yes, the, what it is, is they put, have to put a letter of interest in, there's physical requirements they're gonna have to meet, there's physical training exercises and physical performance levels that they have to meet per NIPAS, and we will review that and send a candidate up to NIPAS. NIPAS has said that they will take whoever we submit, you know, whoever, who we recommend, but we're not gonna send that someone who can't meet their standards.
They're on our payroll when they're doing work for NIPAS, correct?
Yes. That's part of the mutual aid concept. While they're on our payroll helping there, if we had to request the assistance here, they would be on Hanover Park's payroll while they're here helping in Westmont.
What's the reason that we would stay more than a year with them if the G8 is the whole reason for this risk getting involved with them?
That's something we could decide. I mean, again, when you look at budget, and this year, it's an insurance policy for this year. They, they ask for the member to be a five-year commitment, but there's been nothing that we can see in the agreement that requires us to stay on past that. We would have to see...
Actually, a 90-day termination clause in the agreement.
Oh, 90 days, yeah.
So it can be terminated.
Right.
And it does say it's for man-made or natural disasters as well, so it's not just protests, correct?
Correct. Yes, so we did have a tornado or something like that, they could come and assist as well. The other part would be, is that, you know, my first initial assessment was maybe do a two-year commitment, because we are, we're gonna pay for the equipment and for the training. If we average it out over two years, our membership, and then with the training, I think that spreads it out more than just going for one year and then losing the equipment and all, training that he's gonna get. But that is something we could just review.
What was the village that said, no, we're not doing it? Who was the village?
Glen Allen.
Why did they say no?
That I don't know. I just felt that they weren't going to participate. I haven't, I didn't sit down and talk to them, I just went over the survey and saw that they are not.
When trustee Emery was saying, when it comes to the salary, is, is it that we just pay the salary of our officer while he's there and doing training?
Yes.
And so all the municipalities take care of their own officer?
Yes, similar like we do with Fiat, for both the SWAT team and the investigation component. While they're in Downers Grove investigating an incident, they're, they're on our payroll, they're our officer, we're paying there, with the understanding, that's how the mutual aid works, knowing that if we ever had to request, you know, like the one homicide I had, we had fifteen investigators sitting in our training center, they, there's no cost to the Village, it's just our membership fee to Fiat.
So they would, we would have to cover the insurance too, should there be an injury, it still comes out of our?
Yes.
And there.
Yes.
There was one other question, I just lost my mind on that one. It's age.
So, so in essence, all this is, is for something that would be pre-planned, we would have notice of it, that the people are coming. Now let's say, for instance, we're a member, and all of a sudden, out of nowhere, you get a group of 1,000, 1,500, whatever, all of a sudden decide to show up at a different, someplace here in town and start to protest. Now, what happens?
We would, we would contact NIPAS and request their assistance, and see if they could deploy fast enough to assist us at the time. We would have to handle it, you know, in the meantime, but we would ask for their assistance as well.
Let me ask you this. Let's say a mosque is built in Woodridge, and they're not a member of NIPAS, and neither are we, and word comes out that there's gonna be a KKK rally down in Woodridge at the site of the proposed mosque. Woodridge calls us and says, we know this is coming. What do we tell them? Now, as things stand now, do we refuse mutual aid? I hope not.
No. I mean, if we have the manpower, I mean, if the request is there, we would do so. We have to take care of our neighbors, we have to take care of ourselves.
Does every town in DuPage County?
Yes, yes. I mean, we would, manpower there would be depending upon a supervisor calling someone in for overtime, we try to avoid that, but it's also on the level of the request, too. We would, you know, if, we've had requests for other events, where, you know, send officers, we normally don't pay overtime to send officers to another town's events, unless that town has done the same thing for us. And we have an active request, that's something we may revisit this year, but there is a component of Fiat where we can request ahead of time manpower for such an event.
Right.
And I can say one thing for Lombard, Lombard had a rally, or they had a possible protest coming, and they wanted manpower, we sent one officer. And knowing that, hoping that if we had asked a request, they would reciprocate.
Now, the public may want to know, why would they be coming out to DuPage County? When all the action's gonna be downtown? Well, the reasons could be is that not all the corporate headquarters are downtown, and that they're out in DuPage County.
Right.
Correct.
There is that possibility, that they could come out for that reason, and just not come out and visit.
Any other problem? We just don't know. And I mean, our staff, we're attending training, I attended a briefing down at Chicago headquarters a couple weeks ago, we're attending training next week, you know, we're trying to get as much intelligence, we just don't know. It could be, you know, as someone said, the Y2K, everyone's preparing for this, and then nothing happens. It's just that we're trying to be prepared, taking proactive action, so that, you know, we can be in the best possible position should something happen.
And I'm not sure you can guarantee that someone's gonna notify you when they're on their way out.
No.
Right.
And talking with NIPAS, they do have plans, especially during the G8 conference, they're changing their operation plans a little bit, I don't want to get into that in a public venue, but they are changing, so that if they do have to deploy to certain areas, they could do it, do it every, reduce to time period. But again, we don't know. Right now, NIPAS is saying they are not going into Chicago, so if we do send, you know, we do hire someone, if we do join the team, our officers should not be going into the city, is the information we have.
Does most of the towns only have one officer dedicated to this?
I believe, so I'm talking to some chiefs, and I can't tell you exactly which one some chief for sending to.
So if they call for help in another area, our officer should respond, but if he's off on vacation and not around, they don't take that against us, because our officer couldn't get up and help?
The officer on the team?
Yeah, if we dedicate an officer there, and there's something that happens in another town, and they go there, but our officer is sick on vacation or whatever, there shouldn't be a problem?
We, we blacked out, there's a period, I mean, just for us, we blacked out vacations and not so much stays off with vacation and leave time for this week for the NATO and G8. So at this instance, if he was called to the NATO for G8, for NIPAS, he would be, he or she would have to be able to respond. One other thing is too, is that they're, they're planning on putting their, their members on standby or on call, and that's a labor issue that we would also have to address, too. There may be some type of monetary agreement on that.
Well, I was thinking about after this, while they're still in effect, let's say a year from now, there's no problems if...
Right.
I'm just saying other problems. I mean, the officer has to work around his own schedule here for a vacation, now he's gotta work around.
We'd have to work around probably the training dates, it's probably like Fiat, it's like Fiat, they have to meet a minimum number of training dates, so he would have to work...
They have them in advance, so they know when they are.
Yes, I got the schedule right here for the next year. So they'll be giving that date, before the officer is selected, they would have to know that they have to be available and meet all these requirements, it's part of our selection process. If though, let's say that the officer's on vacation next week, and something happens in Glenview that they need to respond to, and our officer's on vacation, it would just be, I'm unavailable.
Okay.
Unless the officer...
Backup officer to be trained, like in another year to backup?
No, no, that would require, that basically was giving two officers, and we're only giving one.
So, chief, for the G8, at this time, they're saying the officer would not be required to go into the city, should something happen down there?
That's what we're being told.
Things change, and I sure wouldn't want one of our officers to walk into that, especially with what I'm hearing on the news, about how they don't have enough training, and they don't have enough equipment, and they're short officers. I sure don't want to offer up one of our fine officers to go into the city, and I think the only way I would really support this would be if that were somehow in the contract. Because, I'll tell you, I just don't want him to go to Chicago.
We've been told they will not amend the contract, and the reason why is because this contract is the same agreement that's in place with all nine and other communities, and it's one of the things that NIPAS has said, is that they aren't gonna have different agreements for different communities.
It seems like Chicago's pretty ill-prepared for this.
We don't, we don't know yet, I mean, because we don't, I don't have, I can't, we don't have access to the Chicago hierarchy to know. I know they are planning, every police department is planning on this, not only for this event, but for other events in the community. NIPAS has told us that right now, they are not gonna go into the city, yet, I mean, if, if it becomes, I don't know, under control of event in the city, I mean, I don't know, I'm not on the NIPAS board, I can't give you, and I can't give you a guarantee to say that they won't. I mean, they told us right now they will not, and they told us they don't plan on it, and they don't, that they will not be going in the city, yet, I mean, if...
If somebody's calling for help, you're not gonna say no.
They didn't say that they would, that that's something that they would have to take, and the same with us here, I would not, my, my plan right now is not to send anyone to the city. And the chiefs that I've talked to that sent officers in for the inauguration event, it was not as well organized as I would like. And so, right now, I'm not planning on sending, sending into the city. However, if it turns into something where, you know, public is endangered, and lives are at stake, and officers' lives are at stake, that's a decision I have to make at that time.
If, if NIPAS got called into the city, they would be under the command then of the CPD?
The way NIPAS works is that they, their, their tactical operations are theirs, they're under their own supervisors, their control. They would get a task from Chicago to go and handle this part, but how they do it operationally is under NIPAS's control, not under CPD's.
So they respond as a unit?
Same was here, too. If I were to say that, you know, there's an event here, we need, we need this intersection cleared. I'm not gonna go and tell them how to clear the intersection, I'm gonna give them the direction, clear this intersection, and they have the operational control under their supervisors as to how to do it.
Gotcha.
And that would be my assumption for the same instance, city.
And, so, well, I'll tell you, Tom, to, if something happens with the NATO G8 in May, which is the 15th through the 22nd of May, and we have an officer who is a member of NIPAS, and they decide to muster and help out down of NIPIS, and they decide to muster and help out downtown, we send out, in my opinion, a sacrificial lamb who's no longer under your control or your direction, and I'm not willing to do that.
Again, I, just, so that we're clear, that part of the thing would be, they would not be deployed to patrol in Chicago, they'd be deployed to a-
There are no guarantees as to what's going to happen.
There are not, no.
Correct.
Is Chicago a member?
No, they are not.
But even though they're not a member, they could still-
They'll call them in and ask for the help, but they are not a member.
It's part of the mutual aid, is again, now the state police is gearing up, state police is going to help them. They're, from what we hear, part of, let's see, I believe it's Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, is the mutual aid that we also participate with. They can call mutual aid, you know, from either down Southern Illinois, from Middle Illinois. They're, again, there's nothing in writing yet, but they really don't want to pull from this area because you don't know, you know, you don't want to send people from home when you're going to have problems at home.
Well, especially because we have the commuter train line going through our town.
And this is why we don't, you know, we don't know if, and we can, that's why we don't know if we'll have problems here in town. There's a good potential that we could.
Right, because we know about the train bombings in the last G8.
There could be a potential that we would have problems here. And that's, again, why we're just trying to be prepared and be ready in case we do.
And the northern and northwest suburbs, some of them have two and three guys that are part of NIPIS, where we would send one. How many of those northwest and northern suburbs are members of Fiat?
Fiat's a local community. That'd be, you have to be housed in DuPage County, with the exception of Brookfield. So when you say northwest, I imagine you mean Lake County, Lake County, those agencies. That's where NIPIS is heavy.
I'm surprised they've opened it up, because NIPIS had always told me that the reason nobody in DuPage was in there is because they had Fiat. And they were kind of, you know, they had their own territories, so.
You have not only Fiat, the Fiat SWAT is a very well-respected agency throughout the state, but there's only 13 communities in Fiat where you have 26, you know, Cook County. I know Oakbrook is a member of NIPIS, has been, and there's another DuPage County, I can't recall offhand, that is, but I know Oakbrook has been for some time. As far as the Fiat, the reason, I don't know why NIPIS hasn't come into DuPage, but just now that we're starting to see that, you know, we're now seeing the need for their services. And they seem to be-
I mean, they're seeing a need to add more members, because they're going to need them more for their areas than worrying about coming into our area.
Right now, I believe their Mobile Field Force is comprised of approximately, I believe it was 100 officers, and what, if you had 25 from DuPage, now you're looking at a team of 125. 25, that's why they felt they would have enough manpower to cover events of, the upcoming events.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next item, engineering services agreement with Burns and McDonald. Order considered ordinance approving a proposal from Burns and McDonald for Phase 1 and 2. We have our Public Works Director, Steve May, with us.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an engineering services proposal only for the Cumberner Road reconstruction project. That work is the, the complete rebuilding of Cumberner Road between 59th Street and 61st Street, and many of you will recall it, that was a, kind of an unincorporated island for a long time. And when it was incorporated into Westmont, we inherited both Cumberner and 60th Street in that location, both of which are built significantly less than what our minimum standard is. The reconstruction project is the complete rebuilding of the road. As it exists today, it might, I mean, it's as narrow as 16 feet wide at some locations. That's the project. This is the engineering design services to put together construction plans for that, and in the next budget, you will see the, the proposed construction for it as well in this coming year, hopefully. Well, you'll see it hopefully. Hopefully, we'll survive the bunch of processes. But this is due to the design plans. Kind of just going into the next item as well, because it's being funded with motor fuel tax, as is the engineering contract, the next item is the resolution appropriating that amount of motor fuel tax funds for the engineering. And again, when the construction comes, you'll see a separate resolution for construction amounts.
Questions? None either. Six or seven?
Nope.
Long overdue.
Yeah, that's a horrible intersection.
It is.
Thank you, Steve.
I like the wording that you used, base failure.
It's a nice way to put it.
Roads crap.
There's not much road there. It's pretty much asphalt on top of-
My car rarely fits on that street.
It's bad.
There's one resident that proudly identifies that his driveway is wider.
Yeah, exactly. All of them do.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Next item, Integris Energy Services Agreement. Order considered ordinance approving a contract agreement with Integris Energy Services, Ash Natural Gas LLC, for natural gas supply service to non-franchised village accounts.
Mayor, similarly like we did with the electrical service for the village buildings and the village properties, the facilities manager and the village manager was working with Belden Energy Solutions, and this is the, the contract for alternative source of natural gas supply. So they will be brokering that, working with them for that. And this is the contract for Integris Energy Services to supply natural gas to village buildings on the few accounts that we have. But at a savings nonetheless.
It looked like it was a month-to-month term.
I believe so.
I read the addendum to the contract directly.
Thank you. Next item, finance ordinance number 20.
Waive the reading?
Request to waive the reading. Purchase orders. Questions on purchase orders? There are no questions moving right along, unless there's something else to come before the board at this time?
I've got one other thing there.
Yes?
Following up on my conversation with the village clerk about destruction of executive session meeting tapes, checked into it while we were here. You were right, and I was right. One, destruction of the tapes is supposed to be authorized by the board, so unless you have a standing policy that says minutes that have been released and are more than 18 years old, the policy is destroyed-
18 months. What did you say, weeks?
18 years.
So he was correct, and she was correct. You can have that standing policy. Otherwise, when you release executive session minutes like this, it should include in the motion and authorization to destroy those tapes.
Oh, okay.
So for purposes of Tuesday's vote, I'll add that authorization. To the other point, we can only destroy those tapes where the minutes are actually released.
But we took them and accepted the hard copy.
At loggerheads again?
Oh, the public body approves minutes of the closed meeting, so they have to approve the minutes. But we don't approve the minutes until we go through them. They're all released.
Right, but those that are 18 months or older, and the hard copy has been approved, they can be, the tape can be destroyed.
Right.
Well, at least our, the money that Ginny spends for training as a village clerk has paid off.
Clearly, yeah.
I pay attention.
Thank you.
Good.
Anything further? Okay, unless there's anything to be brought before board at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session as requested regarding personnel and pending litigation.
So moved, Seneca?
Second, Emery.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clevenow?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned to executive session.